Council Agenda, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of September 10th, 2024. Introduction, Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 20th, 2023, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star Ledger on December 26th, 2023. May I please ask everyone to stand for the flaxalute?
(Inaudible)
Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Township Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Wade Baldwin, Municipal Clerk Colin Madden, Council President. We have a forum, may I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay, upcoming meetings, September 24th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting, and October 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the agenda meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the Council Administration to please review the ordinance for second reading and public hearing, which will be on for a vote at the next meeting. Okay, seeing that we have no questions at this time, we'll go ahead and move into the public session. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The floor is now open to the public to speak on any matter. Once you approach the mic, I ask before you speak to please sign in. You'll have five minutes to speak, and then after, the council mayor may or may not address your question. In the event that you still have something to say after your five minutes is up, you can stick around after the meeting and speak to whoever you'd like to speak to directly. Okay, with that being said, do we have anybody for the public session?
Good evening, Kentalski, Parsippany. I understand that Item 3 on the non-consent agenda is a contract with an accounting firm to do the audit for the Board of Ed. I assume that's correct. And as I said last time, I am not either for or against this audit. However, if we do the audit, it just needs to be that, that there's valuable information that's going to be acquired, that cannot otherwise be acquired by looking at these public documents. So first, I'd like to know, you know, how much we're paying for this audit. And second, I think the council ought to ask, and I'm asking, what is this valuable information that is in public documents, but nobody seems to know, you know, what it is, or how to go about it, such that we need an auditor? I've been told by Mr. Cryon that there is valuable information. I have no idea what it is, and I'd like to understand it better. And I would encourage the members of the council to ask the same questions of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nickomiak from Lake Hiawatha. I'm here to voice my concern, my disgruntled concern about what took place in the zoning Board of Adjustments, that the advertising sign, large advertising sign in inappropriate location, will be installed and will shadow and obstruct and trespass upon the Benedict Livingston Historic Trust property. Now, apparently, Parsippany, I had to say Parsippany, threw in the town because they were afraid of a lawsuit. Now, the Petersons invested $40,000 in the previous hearing, and the planning board voted no. They hired an expert landscape architect and an attorney, and the conclusion was, you can't put the sign, it's inappropriate. So now the developer comes back, and we were blindsided at that meeting. We didn't know there was a close session between Pacific Advertising and their attorney and the zoning board. And the zoning board seemed demoralized. But here's what I have to say. We could have won that lawsuit because the Petersons already won it. So I remember when Guyanino Casino was here, we had lawsuits all the time. There was no problem with any of them. And most of them were frivolous or unnecessary. Or he's working for the town, but he's working for the developers, so he's gaining on both ends. So why Parsippany threw in the town for that additional inappropriate action against that property and neighborhood? Before, it was the school, which I'm disappointed to say the Board of Education supported that to avoid the public housing, which is, it's like scorched earth. You're not going to avoid your obligation. So I didn't understand, I didn't really understand it. But there's, I just want to, in our age of ample alternative channels, outdoor advertising should be deemed anti-community and nature and its over scaled intrusion of visible and light trespass into the surroundings. Must the people be constantly bombarded from every angle as mere consumers for some product at the point of spoiled community and landscape? And I didn't make that up. I got it from a site where you can actually challenge these kind of intrusions into your community. And supposedly, there's an ordinance that Parsippany set themselves up for this lawsuit. I'd like to know what the ordinance is. It says the town outright forbids all billboards without exception carved out for itself. Could such a prohibition stand? Essentially, if the billboard mentioned could be conveyed, conveyed effectively in different and less obnoxious forms. So what ordinance did Parsippany make that set themselves up for this lawsuit? And advertising is freedom of speech, really. Are we that lost in our degradation as citizens to consumers? So I would, just like to say, I hope something can be done. But once again, the Petersons won the argument, put Parsipony through in the town. So that's all I have to say. If you have any comments, I'd be glad to hear them.
Good evening, Mayor and all council members. I handed out some notes. This I found today and was sent to me. Nine New Jersey towns have filed a lawsuit on affordable housing. Flora Park, maybe, I was at the last Mayor's Council, Bob. Maybe we can get a whole in and possibly join a lawsuit in that. And, you know, it says here's who's affected, is Milburn and everybody else. Also, I handed Mayor Barberio a copy of the sign, which is there. I bought 20 of them. I hope we get permission to DOT approve signs, to put them nonstop signs. We almost had an incident tonight. Ten-year-old boy was trying to cross Fern Cliff. I stopped, put my floorways on. Mother went around him, another mother in the back decided to try and go around him, and he gave me the finger. So I tell her, stick it out further, I might break it off. Basically, and also, one year back picture, we had sexual movie night. I hope to get with Glacier Hills people. They turned around. We had approximately 300 kids there. We had fruit box juices for them, water for the adults, and then we had popcorn machine and homemade popcorn for the kids. So we get more of it done. It was nice. They had Kung-Fu Panda on. Some of the kids were running around in pajamas. It was great. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and all council members. My name is Bala Samaga. You have seen me regularly coming here for this council meeting. I live in Glenmont community. So in the past, we have come here, we have said our road issues, and I have heard repeatedly from your members saying that road does not belong to township. And also, I heard like they have put a lawsuit against the developer. So first thing, we would like to know what's the status. And again, the status, I know that, okay, once there's a lawsuit, it takes years. So every time, if you come here, we would not like to hear that, okay, lawsuit has been filed, the case is going on. We need a solution from us till that case comes into solution. That's the first thing. A second thing, yes, as again, all of us in the past, we have said, like, okay, there are a lot of potholes, it needs to be fixed. And I'm seeing a lot of communities where they are doing very good roadworks, but I'm not seeing anything around the Glenmont community, getting into the Glenmont community, or like somewhere in the, because they did a lot of patchwork, but I'm not seeing any repair though there. Third thing, I just want to highlight, like, the New Jersey State gives us something called the Anchor Rebate Program, because we are paying regular property tax. If there is a delay, they put a penalty, and also they send us a green slip, red slip, whatever with a penalty. So when we are paying almost $5 to $6 million from our township, we expect some work for our roads. Or you can think from the New Jersey State Rebate Program. So you can give us some rebate programs based on the property tax we are paying, and using that familiarity amount, we can do our internal roadwork. So just the mindset, I think we have almost 30 members who have come here to represent our community, so you will hear the same thing. I would appreciate some response from Mayor and all the council members.
Sir, I could tell you real quick, before the meeting started, there were a couple residents from your community that were here that I spoke to and gave them an update on where we were at. But then I saw after that, a bunch of people had walked in. So, I mean, I'll let the attorney speak on it, but there are a few of your neighbors over there that know kind of where we're at.
Yeah, so I was giving an update. The township filed suit earlier in August, and we effectuated service on August 23rd, which means they have the lawsuit and they have to respond to it. They have 35 days to respond to it. So at this point, there's nothing for us to do but to wait for their response.
Vijay Panchamiya, I'm also from the Glenmont. And as Bala said, you all know the road condition, right? And I know there is a lawsuit and you have to wait for the response. But is there anything that can be done right now with, you know, all the potholes that we have? It is almost back to square one, right? And it is becoming like a safety concern, quality of life issue. We have kids who are, you know, driving their bikes on that road. We have seniors who are walking there. You have motorists that are trying to avoid the potholes. It's an incident that's waiting to happen, right? And recently, unfortunately, in our town, we had two, three such incidents, where kids are getting hit, you know, because motorists are trying to, you know, avoid or trying to, you know, go around it or whatever, right? So to us, that's a safety concern that needs to be addressed irrespective of, you know, how far we go with the lawsuit. That's number one. Second, we also see, you know, it's been almost a year, right, since, you know, we've been coming here. We also see just outside of our development, very close to where this developer is, you know, has built another development, right on Mountain Way. He's doing his work, he has done some patchwork. It's a very shoddy patchwork that he has done. You come through that road, you will see, the road is almost dipping like six inches down on, you know, going towards the Glenmont, right? So can we at least make sure that while developer is doing a development in that development, that whichever area he opens up, he at least does a good work so that, you know, the neighborhood does not run into problem because he's doing another development? All right? So those are the two things I want to bring it up. If there are any other updates we have, I know lawsuit is going on, but anything you can do to kind of, you know, give us some short-term relief would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Cryon, or Mayor, I know in the past, you had a crew go up there and were working on patching some of those things. Is that possible again?
Yeah, we'll do that again.
Nitin Shinoi, part of Glenmont as well. I don't want to belabor this point over and over again, but I just want to add to what Vijay said. The patchwork done on Mountain Way is so shoddy, when it rains, you can't make out the edges of the road. I actually, my kid was sitting on the booster seat, she kind of really fell off. You know, had it not been for the seatbelt, she would have fallen off the seat. You can't make out the edge of the road. It's a six inch. And when it rains, it's a safety hazard. And I think you're letting the same developer, maybe not the same legal entity, but the same person get away with what they did to us in Glenmont.
My name is Jack Rea. I'm a member of the Parsippany Board of Education. I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen, and my comments do not reflect the position of the Board of Education. At the last town council meeting, after the public comments, the mayor discussed his reasons for pursuing an audit of the Board of Education, that he had received some stuff from Councilman McGrath, and the numbers were all over the place. Frankly, I'm surprised by the lack of precision on the nature of this stuff. Did the stuff refer to the balance sheet, the income statement, the budget, or was it something else that a review of the financials or the footnotes couldn't explain? Regarding so-called questions, why wasn't there an inquiry? You have a CFO, and you have your own auditor to reach out to for guidance. Valerie Dolan is the partner at Dizavatia, the auditor who signed off on the Parsippany Township Audit Report, and I'm sure she can answer any concerns. In the meantime, the citizens of Parsippany erode precision on the nature of your questions. Further, I'm sure your CFO and your account would both advise you that an auditor would be required to be independent in fact and in appearance. The relationship as described would create at least a perception of a lack of independence. Finally, the council needs a resolution to consider if this expense should be an expense to the taxpayers, or if it should be a campaign expense. On a slightly different note, there's a huge warehouse going up on 201 Tabor Road with 25, it's actually more than that. There's about 60 docks on, 30 docks on each side. It's about 500 feet long on each side. This is not a pilot. I called up the town of Morris Plains, and there are no pilots currently going on in Morris Plains. Why is Parsippany so aggressive in employing pilots? What's important to remember is that doing a pilot may well be worse than doing nothing if the costs exceed the revenue brought in from that pilot. It seems to be the hope of the mayor to keep all revenue derived from the pilot projects within the township and excluding the school district. However, that will leave taxpayers to provide the funding for what is likely to be hundreds of additional students. That could be a tab of millions of dollars that the taxpayers will pick up. That is not just my opinion. I invite the council and citizens to read the letter to the editor in the Parsippany Focus on September 3rd by Cheryl Suarez. She correctly sums up that sooner or later, there will be a shortfall in money from the pilot projects to pay towards the school district, and that shortfall will be made up by taxpayers of Parsippany now and in the future. Let me repeat, sooner or later, the shortfall from pilots will be borne by the taxpayer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Deshrajana, and I'm also from Glenmont Common. But, you know, while they raise the all other concern, I want to know what is the governance around anything raised through the GOV pilot program? I wanted to know that because I raised a request to kind of, you know, fill the potholes, what my friend Nitin Shinoi just told that, right? And I'm not sure if any of you have seen that road. There is no road virtually. There is no yellow line. There is no white line, right? Even if you go in dark, little misty conditions or rains, right? You virtually would hit the other side vehicle definitely if your vehicle is wider. So I raise a kind of a request through GOV pilot on 1st of March. It was received on 4th of March, and 5th of March, it was closed with the comment that engineer has evaluated the road. But since March till today, nothing has been done. Nobody called me, nobody explained, and there's no pothole, not even single inch work has been done. The road has further deteriorated because there's another buildup going on in the side by, right? So why are we getting into that condition? And what are the governance around whatever the citizens are raising concern through the GOV pilot? We wanted to know. Who looks after that? Who supervises that? That particular request has been closed properly or not? Thank you.
To the council, Tim Berrios, 24 Farmstead Drive. Somebody had just said this, but I just want to bring it up again. It was to my surprise, NJ.com, nine New Jersey towns suing the state over affordable housing law. It's a nice list here. Flora Park, Hillsdale, Maning, Milburn, Montville, Oltepan, no Parsippany. Haven't we heard for weeks and even a month that we were going to be on some sort of lawsuit? Or is it because the law firm that's representing these guys doesn't play nice with the current administration? I was going to talk about the Board of Ed audit, but, you know, my colleagues have spoken, and they're very good at what they said, so I don't have much to add. So for many of you folks sitting on the dais here and many in the audience, you know, a couple of years ago, an email that I sent, a private email, that was sent to the Republican Club of Parsippany, somehow made its way out and became public. And caused a lot of upsetment, caused a current board member at the time to file ethics charges against me. I won. Ethics charges were dismissed. And when that happened, I did, because I'm in the cybersecurity business and do this for a living, made a few phone calls, did some research, and found out who were the rats nipping at the cheese. So I have all that information. It's sitting with my attorney in a very nice safe spot for a rainy day. So this past August, a rainy day came up. Surprise, surprise. I'm a school bus driver, and I have a Department of Transportation CDL certificate. I was getting my physical at the AFC here in Parsippany, the nice family practice, very nice people, and was I surprised to find it online at Facebook? Now, this idiot could not have known that when you post it on Facebook, it's what they call open source. And I found it. And I found all the information. I know who got it. I know where it came from. I know all this stuff. And my attorney and the AFC attorney have been working very nicely over the past 30 days for our next steps on this process. Shazam. This past Friday, I get an alert from the same security company that says, hey, Mr. Berrios, your background information was inquired. They took a records check, they took a financial check, they took as much information as they could publicly get ahold of as a background on me. That's amazing. By the way, DOT records are personal. They're full on the HIPAA. Okay? HIPAA, that's a big law in New Jersey. So anyways, so right now, I have the same security. They're doing their research. Probably won't have it for a couple more weeks because it's a little more detailed, but we're going to find it. And my attorney will get all that, and then we'll take it from there. But here, I just want to say that this is what happens when you, as a public official or private official, whatever, stand against the regime. When you stand against people who are not working in the best interest of our town. There are at least two people that that falls in line with. And they have no right to sit in front of you. Okay? The other thing is, just think about this. I am a law-abiding citizen. I am not a criminal. Okay? I volunteer my time. I volunteer my service to this community, whether I'm cleaning up off the street, or I'm driving a school bus, or I'm working, I'm sitting on the Board of Education. No private citizen should have to deal with this, especially from two elected public All I can say is God help you. If your name's become associated with this background check, I'm going nowhere. You cannot intimidate me. Nobody sitting in front of me is big enough to intimidate me.
Time's up.
I am coming every meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Once again, my name is Deman Sharma from Glenmont Commons. I attended so many meetings. I'm an observation. I just want to mention that if you live in New York, there's something called Forgotten Borough. That's Staten Island. We feel that we live in Glenmont, a kind of forgotten area of Parsippany. As part of paying, with all honesty, the taxes from all these gentlemen that come and attend meetings, you know, they all pay taxes. Gentlemen, this is ongoing issue, okay? We know that there's a lawsuit filed. God knows when we'll have that result. But we need some kind of salvation. This builder has been getting away from doing wrong things forever. Anyone sitting on the plane knows, actually, including the mayor, the previous administration that he was on, he came in and over the park, actually, and promised, you know, a beautiful park, you know, a beautiful roads. Came back again, we have the same issue, over and over. Okay? We sent out emails, actually. I sent out an email back in February of '24 with multiple points, actually, of roads, park condition, all of that, actually. No response. Okay? Once again, in August, I sent out many emails with the same thing. We speak the same points over and over. I want to urge other residents of Parsippany, they are living in different areas in Parsippany, please come and see. Okay? We're not trying to go into the pocket of other taxpayers. Okay? We are just asking for our rights, whatever the taxes that we paid for the last 23 years, take some things, beautify our area. We go on one side of Denver, they amazingly did the road. On Parsippany's side, quarter mile is left. There's nothing, as the other gentleman had mentioned. No yellow line, no white lines. There's a pond you can drive into. On the other side in Beth Meadow, beautiful road. That falls into Parsippany. With yellow line in the center, there's a cop watching for speeders. Great! It's amazing safety. What about us? Look at us, guys, come on. I mean, please respond to us. You listen to us, but show some kind of an action. Just come and put a band-aid on those hairline. Just come and put a band-aid on those haring, fractured roads. That's not the answer, okay? Do something. Go after this builder. Don't approve the proposed sites actually that he has, right? Do something. If we as residents do something wrong, the city comes and starts giving us a fine five year hours a day until we fix our problems. Why can't you do that to the same thing to the builder? Somebody's afraid over here, okay? Lawsuit, we can't wait three, four years to get some kind of response. Okay? Enough is enough. Please, we are coming here to get some kind of response from all elected officials. Do something. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Yes, my name is J.D. Narula. I'm here to actually speak about Glenmont Commons as well. The reason that I'm here today is really, we as a community really feel ignored. We pay our taxes, we do everything else. We're actually a good community, a very family-oriented community. And one of the problems that we're having is really that we do feel ignored. We feel like nobody cares about us, nobody listens to us. And ultimately, yes, you have cited that there is a lawsuit. The way we see it is that money is really taking over our rights. We understand the builder's rich, they have an exorbitant amount of resources. We have children, we have elderly, we have no sidewalks in that area. And so what you have is people that are walking on the street. When I'm going to try to avoid a pothole, there's a danger that I'm going to hit somebody, whether it be a child, whether it be an elderly person. And so from our perspective, we're just asking that you please listen to us and that you please take action to help our community. Thank you.
See no one else? Entertain a motion to close the public?
Motion.
Hello, my name is Susie Golderer. I am a BOE member, but I am here as a Parsippany resident of over 29 years. Mr. Mayor, I welcome an audit paid for by your campaign funds, not by my taxes. You're using this for political purposes. Sirs, I'm not afraid of your bullying tactics. The school district will receive zero dollars from your housing pilots. You are leaving the school district unfunded. Unfortunately, the Parsippany residents who will be on the hook for over $90 million in lost revenue in those 30 years. You won't be around and you don't care. But you will long be remembered for the wrong things.
Can we talk about this? Are we waiting till we're done?
Well, let's, why don't we do this? Let's close the public session and then under your reports, if you guys can address these issues. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public session? Okay, seeing no one else, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed. At this time, before I move on to the presentations and reports, which you guys can address at fair, just quickly review the consent agenda and the approval of minutes, which will be acted on at the next meeting. Okay, seeing there's no questions, if we can go ahead, go on to the presentation reports. We'll start with the mayor and then move to the township council.
Thank you, township clerk. I got a detailed report here I'd like to go over, but before I get to that, I want to address some of the comments that were made here tonight with regards to pilots and the audit. The audit, it's not an audit, it's a review of their audit is what it is. Their numbers are all over the place. I did have conversations with councilman McGrath. And basically this audit, I have no clue why they're so worried about this audit. If everything's in check and everything's fine, then there's really nothing to worry about. That's the bottom line. And it's not political. They keep saying it's political. They can say that all they want. But what I find intriguing for me personally, I can't go out and say, I'm here as a member of the public and I'm a taxpayer. I'm mayor 24/7 is what I am. Council members are 24/7. I guess school board members are only school board members when they wish to be school board members, which doesn't really make sense to me. Really, when you come up here to speak, you're coming up here to speak as a school board member because you report back to the school board with regards. And that's a fact and I don't want to admit it, but that's okay. You know, I'm looking forward and I've sent out emails to the superintendent of schools of getting together. Let's talk about the pilot money. There is no pilot money going to the schools. You want to know why? No pilots have taken effect. A pilot does not begin until there's a CO, Certificate of Occupancy. So not one pilot has affected the schools whatsoever. Not one. Why? Because they're not complete. And some might not be complete for three, five, maybe seven years, some maybe 10 years. But the school board doesn't tell you this, they get 100% of their money because they're capped at 2%. They're capped at 2%. And basically what it means, pilot or no pilot, pilot or no pilot, they get their money. A perfect example would be, the money that was, that we have to pay, the township has to pay this year is $156 million because that's the cost for the schools. We're the tax collector, okay? Me personally, I wish they collect their own taxes. It'd be a lot easier for us, but that's not the way the law is, that's the way the taxation laws are. If there was a pilot, guess what? They still give us 156 million. But what happens is we have many tax appeals coming. That's why we do pilots at times. Not everything's gonna be a pilot in town. Economy gets better. This pretty much jump-started our economy with regards to some of these pilots, okay? And you know, you continue to hear about warehouses, this and that. So what do we do as a township? What do we do? Okay, well, nobody wants housing because why? Supposedly increases the school-aged children coming into Parsippany. So then we get a warehouse and you pretty much get yelled at for the warehouse, but the warehouse brings no school-aged children. It's 100% taxed for the township and for the schools. Say you're in the catch 22. It's not easy. You have to do it though. But I just want to clarify the one thing about the pilots. There's none. And when they continue to say we get zero money, they're correct. Because we get zero money from the pilot because they're not done. We don't get a nickel from the pilots because they're not done. Some aren't gonna be done for a while. And if we give them money percentage-wise, revenue-wise, it affects the amount of money they get in aid. So we have a negotiating that we're gonna do. I sent an email yesterday to the superintendent of schools to give us some dates. And of course, we gotta wait, we have to wait because the BA doesn't live in New Jersey. So we have to wait in order to have these meetings. Okay? So going forward, I'm looking forward to some sort of settlement with the Board of Education. I really am. I mean, because there are things that I believe...
Hey, please, control yourself. Control down, please.
There are things I believe we can do. Now, and it's kind of funny that when the Board of Education members come up to speak, we respect them, we listen to them, we listen to what they say. I don't moan and groan. I don't moan and groan. I don't moan and groan. I don't say anything. I just sit there and I listen. But when we get to speak, they scream, they yell, okay?
You're a liar.
Yeah, see, that's very immature. You're a Board of Ed member, but you're acting like a five-year-old.
And that is a perfect example of what I'm talking about. So when they come up here and they want to say they're here as a citizen.
Your time is done.
When they're here as a citizen and a resident, guess what? I'm a citizen of Parsippany, I'm a resident. She said 29 years, I'm here 60 years. Okay? It doesn't matter, we all pay taxes, we understand. But to come up here constantly and say pilots are affecting them, they're not. There's not one pilot that has taken effect yet. So I just wanted to clarify that. Remember one thing, ladies and gentlemen, I'll never come up and say, I'm coming here as a citizen and a tax-paying resident. I'm not here today as your mayor. I'm your mayor 24/7. Now, I would like to go on about my report here. Kind of redundant here, but I would like to wish our children, teachers, and proud professionals and administration a wonderful school year. I'm here to report on tragedies on Route 46. And I read this into record the last time. Parsippany has experienced several pedestrian fatalities in less than six months on approximately 1.5-mile stretch of Route 46. Chief Pantina and our team remain committed to doing whatever we can to ensure this is the last tragedy on our roads. But we cannot do it without the great assistance and guidance from Commissioner O'Connor and NJDOT, who we met with on September 4th. Now, I don't know, Jamie, if you're gonna elaborate on it, but the meeting went very well. We specifically talked about the intersection of North Bevick Road and the intersection of Baldwin Road, where a lot of the fatalities occur, and even further down. They brought pretty much a top engineer with them, and our engineer was available at the time as well. Their engineer said the only way to stop fatalities happening on 46 is with a fence. So we took that into consideration. I know nobody wants a fence, but every time there's an accident, it seems like everybody points the finger at me like I'm running people over when I'm not. So we also discussed the left-hand turn on Route 46 from Baldwin Road where two vehicles lost control, they lost control of the vehicles and they ended up on the Smith Road field. We discussed that and they're looking into putting up a barrier for us. I've been in contact with the DOT with regards to the staging area that's been going on for years. We discussed the staging area on Route 202 where our engineers have reached out, I can't tell you how many times, to the NJDOT and Commissioner O'Connor said he's committed to helping us out and he's gonna give us feedback on the staging areas as well. With regards to the Affordable Housing lawsuit where nine towns are challenging the new affordable housing regulations, as you saw, Mr. Berrios tried to make this political by saying, I didn't like the law firm with regards to not being involved. And that's what I'm talking about, you know? He's constantly making things political, but that being said, I've never dealt with an affordable housing attorney, Michael Collins. And I'm an affordable housing administrator, I've dealt with many, many affordable housing attorneys. I know some that are fantastic. I want to meet with Michael Collins. I want to feel comfortable. We're gonna get involved in this lawsuit, but I want to feel comfortable with Michael Collins. So we're gonna be reaching out to him today, I mean tomorrow, to have conversations with him and most likely we'll be putting up a resolution to join the towns. I spoke to the mayor of Hanover Township and we're gonna join as well. I think we're gonna do the resolution tomorrow. So we'll put our resolution up for the next meeting. But you know, I just don't plan to go into, and I gotta hear, I don't care who the law firm is, are they gonna do a good job and they can help us out and help us out with the affordable housing regulations? That's great for us. It really is. I have another side note here on the Baldwin Road, which was supposed to start on September 9th, but it's been moved to September 12th. That's the Baldwin Road sewer project that will be finally completed. It's gonna start September 12th at 8:00 p.m. and they will be working through the weekend. That's the road actually by the PAL. GOV Pilot, as of September 10th, year-to-date, total concerns is 559, like I said, year-to-date. Open right now at 9, which is 1% of the 559. In progress of 46, which is 8%. And the concerns that have been completed and closed are 504, which is 91%. This Thursday, we have a summer concert at Veterans featuring Garden State Radio, which begins, and this is I call Family Fun Week because it's gonna go all the way into the 15th, which begins at 7:30 p.m. On Friday, September 13th, we have our farmer's market from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. and our summer concert series is at 7:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. featuring the band Overboard. Overboard's a very good band, several of the residents from Parsippany. This Sunday, September 15th, from 12:00 to 5:00, join us for our annual fall festival, which will be held at Smith Field. On a sad note, one of our patrolmen, who I just swore in last year, and his father this Sunday passed away tragically, and I want to send out prayers for him and to his entire family and I wish the council the same, do the same. Tomorrow, join us for a 9/11 ceremony at 8:40 a.m. at the Parsippany Trails Minister Building for solemn remembrance ceremony honoring the victims of September 11th attack. And I have, this year, we are honored to welcome Richard Palmer Jr. as our guest speaker. Richard is a 9/11 first responder and tireless advocate for those affected. He will share his powerful and his story of courage and service. I met with him and I'll be totally honest with you, I was blown away with that man saw and what he went through during 9/11. And I want to thank the local PBA Local 131, our police department, and I want to thank patrolman Dave Cavalier for getting this gentleman for us to speak tomorrow, a very powerful speaker. He was on ground zero and I'm looking forward to it. And council president, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Township council?
Yes, okay. I have a few things, so bear with me here. Our traffic committee, some of our traffic committee met last month at the August Neighborhood Watch Meeting. There was an informative presentation by the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition, pedestrian and bike safety, a vision for safer streets in Parsippany. One of their objectives is to adopt a complete street policy in Morris County. Morris Township has adopted complete streets policy and has invited local mayors and reps next week to discuss the benefits. I think this is something we can explore where it's feasible because we're different than other towns, being so big. But complete streets are designed to ensure safe and adequate accommodation of all users of the transportation system, including pedestrian, bicyclists, public transportation users, children, older individuals, and people with disabilities, even freight vehicles, which we'll be having a lot of those soon. NJDOT and US DOT promote the adoption of complete streets. So I know they're, I think you might have gotten an invite, they're looking to see if somebody from the council might want to go as well. For the Parsippany Environmental Committee and Green Team, recently, the governor signed into legislation A4619 and S3479 enhancing historic property reinvestment and brown fields redevelopment, but what that's gonna allow us to do is to do solar on landfills. And I would like us to, we've been talking about this in the Parsippany Green Team for years, I'd like us to finally maybe move forward with this, council and this is administrator. We have a plan, we can save money, and we can have clean energy if we do this in Parsippany. Half our energy usage is from the wastewater treatment plant. I also went to a Highlands seminar on Friday, which marked the 20-year anniversary of the Highlands Council Act. Reminder that 82% of people in New Jersey get their water from the Highlands, hence the need for this act and their oversight. Of particular interest was a presentation by Huntington County on the money and assistance they received for stormwater management and for economic development. And the reason why it's interesting is because Huntington County was suing the Highlands early on because they were in a development area and they felt that they were being controlled by the Highlands. They've received a lot of money for stormwater management and economic development with influencers and really rebranding their town. Maybe Parsippany could use help with some stormwater management. We do have issues here and new MS4 requirements. And maybe we could look for maybe some other alternatives in economic development with all the vacancies that we have in stores and buildings. Conformance also can help us update our open space and recreation plan. These are extra dollars and resources that should not be left on the table. These are opportunities. And I did want, I did talk to you a little bit, the business administrator, I'd like to talk a little bit more with the council moving forward on the fair share housing and our responsibilities in the next few months. and/or responsibilities in the next few months, please. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any other member from council?
So, I do want to talk a little bit about Glenmont Commons, because I do have a question. So, you know, they do keep coming up, and they have some good arguments here about what we're trying to do. We have a lawsuit that we just started. What is the opportunity for us to go, get a bond, fix the streets, and ask for that back from this lawsuit? With whatever additional cost or potential cost would be on top of it, what's the risk?
Legally, the risk, I mean, the risk is just lawsuits are never known, and you'd wait until the resolution of the lawsuit, which, I mean, they're accurate, it can take years.
Sure.
So, that is a known risk, and the risk is you never know what the actual amount's going to be. If it's settlement down the road, it's going to be a negotiated settlement that you don't know what it's going to be, and if it goes to trial, you don't know what a jury or judge will assign to the value. So, I mean, that's, the risk is just the unknown.
I'm sorry, what is the lawsuit actually asking for?
So, it is a lawsuit to the developer, because they never transferred the roads over.
Okay, so it's just for transfer.
So, it's their responsibility to maintain it.
So, that brings up another problem. Can we fix their roads? Like, if they own the roads, can we go and fix them?
So...
How would that affect the lawsuit?
We would need an assignment of the roads at some point and to take over them, but, I mean, they're in the jurisdiction of the township.
And what's the cost to fix these roads? Do we have a cost, BA?
I mean, approximately, the last I heard was like between 4.2 million or $5 million.
4.25?
To answer your question with regards, to regards to the roads and why we don't bond for it, we don't own the roads. And I just, I'm going to be very limited in what I say, because we are suing the developer with regards to who owns the roads. And, you know, I don't want any of us to jeopardize our lawsuit with regards to the actual lawsuit, so that's why I won't publicly speak on it. But, you know, we put the lawsuit in for a reason, and, you know, there's really not much more I could say, because that could be held against us.
Understood. So, maybe, I guess, is that something we can take to closed session? Or, like, what can we do?
Yeah, you could take that, I mean, I'm not the attorney here, but...
No, sorry.
Bring it to executive session.
Yeah, further discussion we could have in closed session.
Not today, because it must be posted, but yes, potential litigation or litigation matters, confidential matters can be discussed in closed session.
Thank you.
Who owns Denville's roads? I mean, if it's the same developer, it's, does Denville own those roads?
No, Denville doesn't own them.
So, it's the same developer, but he's not doing our roads?
What, basically...
I don't know the details.
Yeah, it's just...
Oh, we can't have...
We'll have this to executive session.
Yeah, we'll say for that.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I guess I would just like to make a few comments myself before I went on a quick vacation. I actually met with the DOT at the staging area. One of the takeaway items that they're going to look into is seeing what they can, how they can enhance the shrubbery of the staging area to make it less of a visual eyesore for the residents in that area towards the top of Lake Precipitany. And then, I guess, you know, with number two, you know, I'm glad that we're advancing cannabis and getting the, you know, special counsel for this. I would just want to know, you know, what the process will look like as we roll that out, you know, who's going to be involved, how we can make sure that it's a fair and equitable process for everybody that is involved. And then, number three is, I do think it was a missed opportunity for us not to lead this affordable housing lawsuit. I understand that it's important to feel comfortable with the council that we choose to take this on, but I think, given how injurious this affordable housing has been to Precipitany, and led rightly or wrongly to so many disputes that we have about housing and pilots, and the best way to deal with these matters, we really should have been the leader here. And to not be so is a real missed opportunity. And then, the last thing I'll comment on is, I see that the audit is on here. Again, you know, I need to reiterate my staunch opposition to this. I think that, you know, it's been made clear how the community feels about this, and I think what might be a better alternative is to see what the superintendent says about any concerns that the administration has about their numbers. Because if there are numbers that need to be cleared up, I'm sure the superintendent or their auditor, who happens also to be the towns auditor, that we trust and that we pay, could speak to that. So, I don't think that we should vote on this. I think it should be tabled until such conversations happen, and that's all I have.
Any other member from council?
Yes. I would like to read into the record my statements on long-term tax exemptions, otherwise known as pilots, and the recent antics of our Board of Education and wannabe politician, Mr. Justin Mocella. I have a unique perspective of these matters, because before I was councilman, I served on a Precipitany Board of Education 15 years, six years as president, from 2016 until December 31st, 2021. I've worked on several other capacities for our children, too numerous to name, for decades in this town. Frankly, I will put my resume of commitment to Precipitany children up against anyone on this town. In fact, I've been serving Precipitany's children for over 35 years, longer than Councilman Mocella has been alive. So, what I'm about to say, I say with longstanding experience and unparalleled commitment to our children and our schools. Councilman Mocella, you are a disgrace for putting this trash piece out along with the Board of Education members, and it's just a disgrace, you know, doing our corporate developments dirty, all this stuff. And by the way, you spelled "school" wrong. It's S-C-H-O-O-L, not S-H-O-O-L. It's a disgrace you would put something out to try to discredit someone who's done so much for this town. So, I'm a little upset about that. You know better. You know much better than I do for all the children of this town and the Precipitany children. And what I want to claim, and if you want to claim you didn't have any involvement in this despicable piece of literature, then say so at the end of my conclusion of my remarks. Otherwise, young fella, you own it. The Board of Education's antics regarding pilots are also despicable. Spreading misinformation about municipal government policy and using taxpayer resources and funds to do so is reprehensible. But that is exactly what the Board of Education has been doing since late last year, and to what end? More on that in a moment. We have a problem in this town, and the mayor has properly identified it. Vacant office buildings, more than any other in this part of New Jersey. I don't understand the infatuation that Councilman Mocella and the Board of Education seem to have with vacant office buildings. Is it cool? Is it a thing? Is it today's thing? I don't understand. What am I missing? They cost us money, and they need to be put to productive use. If zoning alone solved this problem, the problem would have been solved. The reality is that pilots are necessary in some, but not all instances, to make these properties productive again. We must be smart and take measures to reduce the tax burden on our residents by shifting it to our commercial properties. The mayor is exactly correct about this. It is what he ran on, and it's what the majority of people in Precipitany want us to do. There have been a lot of lies and misinformation about pilots, which I would like to address. The Board of Ed and Councilman Mocella continue to lie and claim that pilots take money away from the schools. This is a lie, and they know it. The truth is, the Board of Ed gets every penny it budgets for, whether there are pilots or not. So, folks, the fact that pilots, they don't take money away from the students, not a single penny. So, please, stop lying to our parents and children by saying the pilots will result program cuts. They don't. Some in our community want to compare how much school tax would be paid on a project if it were taxed on a regular tax basis as opposed to pilots. To them, pilots place more of a burden to school funds on those who pay regular taxes. That sounds real smart, but it's not. The reality is, if these projects don't, won't get done without pilots, comparing a pilot without a pilot is a false comparison. That is why we have financial consultants to review projects and determine whether a pilot is needed. The new lie is that pilots produce school-aged children. Here's a newsflash, folks. Pilots aren't creating the Precipitany housing boom. The New Jersey Supreme Court is under the Mount Laurel Affordable Housing Doctrine. In fact, not one child has been placed in any Precipitany school from any pilot this administration has approved and will not be for many years to come. The Board of Education knows this, but they misrepresent the people that pilots are creating school-aged children. This is a lie. That is not to say that pilots cannot or will not be used for inclusionary development. From a planning and project quality perspective, we want quality development in appropriate areas that may require pilots to be considered on a case-by-case basis, but to suggest that pilots bring school-aged children now to our schools is just plain stupid and a lie. The units that are going to be built somewhere in town, and they're coming, whether or not they're pilots or not. When I left the Board of Education as president on December 31st, 2021, the Board of Ed finances were sound and strong. A lot has changed since that, and I don't think for the better. Because the Board of Ed has opted to have elections in November, it is subject to a 2% cap on increases. The problem for the Board of Ed, I suspect, is that its expenses are going up more than that. In addition, I suspect the business practices of the Board of Ed waste a ton of taxpayer money. So, self-imposed 2% cap and wasteful spending have likely put the Board of Ed in a bad financial situation. So, here's my view on what's really going on. The Board of Ed actually understands, or at least the smart Board of Ed members, that pilots can be a good thing, because pilots provide an opportunity for the schools to receive a financial benefit outside of the cap. So, their attack on pilots is really a shakedown of us on the council and the mayor to provide them with a direct financial benefit from pilot funds the township receives. This was confirmed when Board of Education President Andy Chaffo said he would send the mayor a letter every week to make sure and to meet on how much money the Board of Ed will get from the pilots. Andy, you're behaving like a spoiled child who demands money from his parents. That's shame on you. You're much better than this. You're a good man, Andy. Why do you go this route? Justin Mocella is a fool who's being used to do the Board of Ed bidding because he thinks it will get him votes. Justin, that's why I can't respect you. All you care about is Justin. You don't care about the kids. The mayor has taken a position, which I support, that we should get an audit of the Board of Ed finances to see if they are being good stewards of the taxpayer money before we consider sharing pilot money with them. Why should we hand the Board of Ed more money to waste if that's what they're doing? Again, when I left the Board of Ed in December 31st, 2021, its financial house was in order. But I'm hearing that may no longer be the case. The mayor's audit is appropriate, and in my view, necessary to do before we commit giving pilot money to the Board of Ed. Folks, we all have a responsibility to do what's right for our community and kids. Lying to the public about pilots is not right. Shaking us down for pilot money is not right. The Board of Ed's enlistment of a naive and very green political wannabe politician like Justin Mocella to further your cause is not smart. It's not helping you get money. The mayor loves our schools as much as anyone I knew, including myself. He's a product of our public school system, as I am. He's at all the events, and I know because I go to many of them as well. I don't see Board of Ed members there, but I see the mayor and I. We've both been doing this for years. He raises money for school causes, so much money, it's unbelievable. How much has, have you raised, Justin, for the Precipitany children and the school system? If there's one thing no one can question, is the mayor's commitment to the children of our schools. The mayor has said that he is conceptually agreeable to working out a shared service arrangement with the schools and pilots. I share the mayor's view on this, and I suspect most of us do. I also share the mayor's view that it is necessary to understand how the Board of Ed is spending our taxpayer money before we commit to sharing large sums of money with them. That makes sense, and anyone with any sense would agree with this. I would like to conclude my remarks on a positive note. I love this town. I've lived here since 1966, and I've devoted much of my adult life to its children as a volunteer, as a Board of Education member, and its president, and now as a councilman. We need to turn the page on all this nonsense that's been going on the past few months. We need to work together and get some positive things done for this community and the children of our community. Thank you.
Well, you're not going to read that into the record without me responding to what your most serious charge. What proof do you have that I gave something like that out at that meeting?
Well, I'm just asking if you did.
No, 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 that's not what you said. You said it as a statement of fact.
That's what I said.
Oh, no, no. Let's answer, let's go question by question. Were you at that meeting?
I wasn't there, but there was a lot of other people there, see?
Okay.
A lot of other people are handing it out, you know?
Okay, is that me?
No, it's not you.
Okay, so what proof do you have? Let's go back to your most incendiary charge that I handed that out. What proof? You weren't at this meeting. You showed up a picture that's not even me. So, what proof do you have that I handed out something like that?
Well, if you see what I said, Justin, I said publicly denounce it.
Right, I'm publicly denouncing the fact that I didn't give it out.
Okay.
But don't say for one second...
I didn't say.
You did.
Publicly denounce it.
You know, you did.
Otherwise, you own it.
It's not the first time that you've done that, all right? And let's get, we're going to continue to move on, since we put that to rest. I have never for one second questioned yours or the mayor's commitment to the town. We go to the same events together. We support the same causes. I'm going to raise my child here, who's going to go through the education system. So, don't ever say for one second that I don't care about this town, or that I don't care about the future of what happens here. I believe you and the mayor do in your hearts. I've never said that once about you, and I've always kept my criticisms of these policies professional and not made it personal, calling me a wannabe politician.
Well, I'm...
I've never said that to you. And I've always shown you respect. So, don't dare say that for one second.
Well, I believe so.
And the one thing that I do agree with you, in this town, we do have a problem. And that problem is, it's elected officials that abuse their power and attack people who question those who have it.
Council President, can I please respond to that? You know, first of all, Justin, you consider it an attack when it's not agreeable to you. And it's not an attack. No one's attacking. If someone disagrees with me, that's fine, they can disagree with me, and I've said that to you 100 times. I said, "I respect everybody's opinion, but when I come back and say something, it's because I'm attacking them. I'm not attacking nobody." I've been in this town, like I said, I've been in this town 60 years. I've been mayor going on my 12th year, and, you know, I constantly get attacked, and I don't take it personal. You know, I don't, and that's just part of the job. And it's just the same thing. As I speak, again, as you can see in the back, you have the individuals who just can't be respectful. So, yes, we've got to respond to those that aren't respectful. So, I'll leave it at that. I believe we all have our hearts in Precipitany.
You know, what I would say is, to be fair to the mayor, we've had some strong disagreements. We haven't obviously seen eye to eye, but we can talk to each other without personally attacking each other. And I appreciate what you said, and I think that's, you know, very kind of you, but, you know, there's no place to just throw insults and question this person's commitment to this town and say that they're a wannabe politician when the basis of the disagreement has been on policy, I think is just really lacking in decorum.
Council President, could I say something?
Sure.
This now, on the non-consent agreement, we have 2024151, and I'm thinking this is the source of flawless conversation about pilots and audits, and I need to know more about that.
All right, well, when we get to that, we'll...
Okay. I'm just putting it out there.
Any other member of Township Council wish to speak or make any statements?
Unfortunately, if they haven't responded at this time, if you'd like to stick around after the meeting, which should be over fairly soon, you can speak to them if there hasn't been a response.
Glenn, I thought we had to have a closed session.
Well, the closed session is not going to be today. We have to advertise it according to the Open Public Meetings Act, so we can advertise for it, and then have a closed session at the next meeting, and then you can open and... for it and then have a closed session at the next meeting, and then you can open and discuss it to the public, whatever that they deem could be public information at that time. But what we'll do is, as long as the council president and mayor authorize that, we will go ahead and advertise for the closed session on the next agenda, and we can have a closed session discussing this matter.
But just a quick question, isn't the point of closed session not to discuss what?
There can be matters in the closed session that can come in public if what is deemed... Go ahead, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, yeah, so it needs to be notified that it's happening and what it's going to be discussed, but then the actual discussion is happening in closed session.
But we won't be able to reveal to the public the content of that conversation?
That is true. The majority of the content may not be revealed, but there could be content. As sometimes they report out to the public, sometimes after a closed session, the attorney reports out to the public, and sometimes, for example, if we're going to be voting on a resolution. So it could be something along those lines. But you are correct, Councilmember Musala.
If I can add, because this is not being said, it needs to be said. We have a lawsuit, okay? We cannot discuss that lawsuit out in the public. It's that simple. And if we discuss that lawsuit out in the public, we're putting the town in jeopardy. Now, I want to respond to the residents, but we have a lawsuit, and I can't come and respond for that reason and vice versa to council. So I want to make that aware, I want the council to be aware that when we have an active lawsuit, you cannot be making any comments to the public or to anybody else until that, until it's settled, because now you're going to put the town in jeopardy, and you're going to put the residents in jeopardy, and possibly who are suing can get an upper hand. So I just caution you to be very careful on any specifics when you speak about a lawsuit.
I actually do agree with the mayor on this. I would feel really uncertain as to what would the point of going to closed session on an active lawsuit and coming out were setting the expectation?
We do not need to go into closed session. That is a decision of the council and the administration. If you guys choose not to go into closed session, then I at the clerk's office will not advertise it at the next meeting.
You can go to executive session, you just can't discuss it outside the perimeters of executive session. But the point I'm trying to make is, I caution you.
I would say if none of the council members have any questions in reference to the lawsuit, there's no need, unless members of the council need to go into closed session to get any kind of update.
No, there's no, I have no issue with getting an update. I think we were setting the expectation with the residents that we were going in to come out and tell them.
Yeah, no.
An update when we can't really do that.
That's a good point, Mr. Musala, and that is correct.
Is that, was that your expectation? Okay.
So if that's the case, then like Council President said, in the event that council has any questions, then we can go into closed session. But if there are no questions, there's no need to put closed session on the agenda for the next meeting until otherwise instructed.
So, I mean, as I say, I don't feel like my question's been answered, so I would love a closed session so we can talk a little bit more about it.
Okay, so we have a request by Councilmember McGrath. Council President, Kareefi, you can go ahead.
You can put it on the agenda then.
Okay. Any other member of Township Council wish to speak or report out? Seeing no one, I will move on to the township attorney. Can I take any questions at this time? Township attorney, anything?
Uh, no report.
Okay, township administrator.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Just real quickly to follow up on what Mayor mentioned about the meeting with the NJDOT Commissioner. Commissioner O'Connor, the deputy commissioner of the NJDOT, and a team of about five or six other people came up to Porcipony last week as a jester, on the surface, just as a gesture to show how important safety is to them and how much they understand the issues that we are experiencing here in Porcipony. Some of the things that were discussed, Mayor had mentioned the fence, that's one of the things that they're talking about. They're looking to expand the crosswalks to about 10 to 12 feet. That will make it more visible. They're putting in new technology when crossing that will make sure that the lights don't change until someone is fully across. So they're doing a whole, a major technological initiative to enhance the safety of Route 46 particularly. Other things that they talked about were what they're seeing around the state, and they're going to be making a push forward with prosecutors, is that people are, the police are pulling people over, and then they're going to courts, and they're getting dropped. Or, so there's no ramifications for a person's unsafe behavior. So they're going to be making a big push with that to prosecutors all around the state, and they believe that that will help. And I would say that that would help. Have you ever been to municipal court and see the amount of times that things have been, you know, something significant gets put down to something, to nothing, you know, just a couple of extra dollars? It's 90% of the time, it seems. But that's really it. They want to prioritize that and make sure that they are helping us with grant money for enforcement and for education, so there's going to be a push for that. They, the commissioner actually went over to the staging site to take a look at it and see what he could do to make sure that that's prioritized, because Mayor made a big deal about that to him, and he was apologetic that his team originally wasn't calling back, and then some members of his team kind of came out when they weren't supposed to come out. So now it's back on track, and they're going to do everything possible they can to make sure that they are partnering with us to fix some of these issues. That's all I have.
One idea that I had, it actually came from a study I read about one municipality that was combating increases in traffic accidents, is that they've tried, they've started taking down signs that are redundant in the advent of GPS to reduce traffic friction and also help take the attention that drivers might have on signs. Did that, I don't know, let me know if it came up, but is that something that we could easily do, is start looking at, you know, which signs do we just not need anymore and have outlived their purpose to just make it a more easily visible drive when, you know, people are driving and pedestrians are walking?
I think it's something that can be looked into and achieved definitely outside of their roads that they control and, you know, but around town, that's something that can be worked on.
Yeah, just an idea that I saw that some municipalities have started doing.
Okay, moving along to the non-consent agenda. R 2024-149, approving and authorizing retail local license renewal for the licensing term July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musala.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Kareefi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-150, contract with Attorney Ronald Mondello as special counsel for cannabis matters. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musala. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musala.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Kareefi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-151, contract to De Maria and De Maria LLP for accounting, auditing, and consulting services. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion.
So Judy, did you want to discuss this more?
Yeah.
So before we do that, let's have a motion in a second, and then we'll have open discussion.
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it to the council members for any questions.
I do have questions. It's kind of harken back to what Mr. Kandalski mentioned before. What's the goal? What are we looking for? How much is it going to cost? And did we get competitive bids if this is for the audit of the Board of Education by the municipality? So there's a few questions there. What is the goal? What are we looking for?
So I think in the attachment that we received, it said it was 17.5 was the estimated cost.
Yeah, and that's for an audit? That seems like...
It will not exceed.
It will not exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yep.
Not to exceed.
Okay. That's what I thought. So that's kind of a low cost. So what are we looking for then? We're auditing the budget, auditing the audit?
What we're doing is this. It's not auditing their audit, it's getting the detail of the audit. We have an auditor who's been doing this, I guess, 40-something years. He's auditing their audit, not auditing it, he's reviewing their audit, and he comes up with findings, and if he comes up with any, then he comes back to the township and says, this is what we found, and such and such. I mean, let's have a meeting with the Board of Ed. You know, if you want township money, I think there has to be a way to say, we need a professional to understand, I understand the township budget, I understand it very well. The school board budget's a little bit different. And, you know, the numbers were all over the place, and I feel comfortable with having an auditor. And if there's no issues, then, you know, we're going to move forward anyway. We're going to meet with the Board of Ed, hopefully shortly. I sent a message out today to meet, and that's really what it comes down to.
So I think, Judy, for me, right, some of the questions that I've looked at and I tried to answer, and Mr. Dolski had sent me an email where I sent him a response, and I believe I blind copied you on that response, that the whole, you know, council could have it. The question originally stemmed from when a mother came to our council session and said that because of the pilots, right, and we inherit all pilots. I don't get to say, oh, I've only been here nine months, I didn't accept a single pilot. I have to inherit what was here before me, whether it's 1515, Campus 2 and 3, Sullivan, all of it. I inherit all of it, and we all inherit all of it, so we all have to answer for it. But when I looked at the data, what I saw was inside the actual audit document for 2023, it's like, I don't know, 170, 180 pages. It shows a reduction of over 267 kids over time. So it shows a decreasing population of what's coming into our town. Now, also, a previous school board member had given me a document that outlined what's the projected number of students. And you start with 1515, that's the first one that'll come online, and if anybody hasn't, go drive by it, and you'll probably estimate it'll come online in the next five, six months, would be my estimation, maybe sooner, maybe later, but it's certainly not going to be 100% populated in probably this calendar year. I would assure you of that. But based on the number of a .4 multiplier against 2, 3, and townhouse-type style bedrooms, you're looking at about 54.4 kids.
I looked at the...
Well, hear me out. So plenty of room, but we heard it's, we're going to have unfunded, we're going to have not enough room for students, the number of students Mr. Ray brought up, Ms. Goldrill brought up. There's questions over how many students can we fit in the school? Now, the only data sets I pull from are from the school's data sets. The first page of every simplified budget gives you a readout of the number of students from 2010 to this year. You can plot them on a graph. You can see what the estimate was, you can see what the actual was, and you can see what was called out in the audit. I plotted it on a graph, and what I saw is that we're probably somewhere about 270, 300 students below where we were at a high point when my kids were here. If I wanted to really go high point, I could go back to 210, there was even more kids. But I'm going to judge it just based on recent memory. So the challenge is, the school feels that there's kids in their school, that they have to go above a 25 to 1 ratio because of pilots today, and that was stated in the school board. And that parent that came here said she received communication from the school board and from the superintendent that that's accurate.
But I think the school board can't just, then in the middle of the year, say, oh, we're going to change that. So that's, I think that's maybe why they do it before the year. And I was on the planning board when we did the land use plan for Stanbury and all those, and the numbers in the original land use plan were not the same as what you had. There were higher numbers.
So I want to go back to the numbers again, Judy.
From the master, you know, the master plan and affordable housing.
2023 enrollment as of October 15, 2022, 6,992 students. Four years previously, 7259. My estimation is there's probably room for 54.4 students at a .4 multiplier. Now, additionally, on the document provided to me, it does give the actuals of where they are against where their rates are, and they're a little closer to where the Rutgers study or the Harvard study is, around a .2 multiplier. So the question of can we fit the students, it looks like we can. And the nice thing also about when you go to the simplified form, it gives you a breakdown of special needs students, enrollment, share time, gives you a full breakdown. So you can kind of do the assessment, hey, special needs are maybe a 4 to 1 teacher ratio versus a traditional student is maybe a 25 to 1, whatever those ratios are. But it also gives you a breakdown of teachers. So the teaching staff in the same time period went from 765 to 804. So the question, Judy, back to your point, is if we have 804 teachers for, call it 7,000 students, that's less than 10 to 1. Take out special needs, which are about 996, I think, was the last reported number. So call it 4 to 1, that's about 200 teachers, 250 teachers out. It's still not matching what the school board sees. So we have a problem, right? The numbers don't match. Now additionally, the big thing for me, and if anybody's sat here, or you can go back and listen to me, I've called out a few problems we have coming. We have PFAS, right, as we sat down and listened to Sean Andres.
We get help with that from the federal government.
Absolutely, Judy.
And with intense violence.
When it comes, I definitely will change my opinion on things. But until then, it's 5 million in Wellhead, times 18, that's 90, or we'd have 30 with those 10 that are going to do treatment around it. Then we have the piping, which we've approved, we've approved, Judy, $7 million, like two, three times already. And there's another pipe burst on bail today.
And I say, can we pay attention to municipalities? Because nobody ever listens to me. Nobody calls me back, nobody listens to anything I say when it comes to these things that you're talking about.
Let them finish.
Okay, I apologize.
So Judy, it's 464 million, 220 miles, 5280 mile, 400 linear foot. We've been approving those. If you go back and look, we're approving those, right? So we've all seen it. And in the last piece, and you've heard people talk about it, there's a billion dollars in tax reassessment. And I talked about when I first came in, there was $2.9 million taken out of our tax revenue day one. So coming into this year, we're $2.9 million shy. So if we raise taxes 2.78, we still didn't catch up with the tax reassessment. Well, the problem is, a billion dollars at 3.4 is roughly our tax rate, do the math, right? And we, as the town and the school combined, are about 30 million of that. Now, I'm not saying the school has to give us a dollar back. The school has reviewed that early January, as well as I believe it was in June, and they said they're not on the hook for paying us back, and I'm not asking them to. That's our problem, we got to deal with it. But, there's a big but. All of the pilot money that comes out, my understanding is, is expense money, which means it raises our tax rate. So add up all the things I've just told you, it's tax rate, tax rate, tax rate, tax rate. So when you have a 2,000 square foot house on a third of an acre and you're paying $20,000 in taxes, all the things I just said to you are the things that we've already identified as problems. So if we're going to say, just give away money, then I say, let's verify. Because I also asked, and hopefully the school board can shake their head yes or no, I asked the question when we met, when I read up on the towns that took pilot funding, they could not take it because it went against their 2% cap. And the references are like Hoboken goes into a trust fund split across three schools that go towards capitalized projects. Because if I just give you the cash, it goes towards your 2%, you actually walk away with nothing extra. So the goal is, is to look at what are capitalized projects that we can help with? What are shared services we can help with? I voted for a budget that put the SROs as shared service, that kept the garbage collection in. So to me, being frugal and looking at this before we just say yes, which would be a new tax rate, so everybody would come up here in a year and say, how'd you raise taxes again? I'll tell you to come back to this video and re-watch it. That's what you're going to get with it. to this video and re-watch it. That's what you're going to get with. So we should look at it, understand what it is, and then determine if it's right or wrong. That's all I'm saying. I think, understand the data.
Spends a lot of time doing that. I wish we would spend time looking for other sources of revenue as a municipality that are on the table that we're leaving. That's a separate conversation, I know, but I've been sitting up here, month after, week after week that we're up here, and I just feel like we're not moving forward.
I think, um...
I'm frustrated.
You know, it's definitely evident, Councilman McGrath, that you've spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, for the full disclosure, Councilman McGrath and I met, you know, he shared his findings with me, he raised a lot of questions. I'm not an expert on the Board of Education. So, you know, clearly, there were a lot of questions that he had, and I did tell him I would relay a lot of the questions that I had to the, to Board President Chaffa, which he did, and I got some responses back from the superintendent. I think, big picture, and what's very unclear at this moment, is will this De Maria and De Maria, where the center of contention is about number of students, teachers, the auditors that I've spoken to said that auditors do not look into this and verifying that. They look at, do expenses equal revenues? Do the grants received equal the grants applied for? But there's no in-depth, you know, I guess, microscope on the composition of the school district. And that seems to be a big question here, so I don't know if De Maria and De Maria will look at that. But since they were brought up here, I do want to just read the, the quick highlights that were, that were mentioned. So when it comes to school-aged children, the question that, you know, I had asked is that in 2020, there was a reported enrollment of 7,259 students, and in 2024, the last reported was, excuse me, last reported in 2023 was 6,992. And the superintendent wrote back, and I'll summarize, "It's unclear where the township has garnered the foregoing numbers. It must be remembered that the district's enrollment figures are not fixed. They vacillate depending on when students move into and out of the district for student, or student becomes homeless. For reporting purposes, the district's enrollment figures are fixed on October 15th of each year. That does not mean that district refuses entry to students after that date, nor does it mean that the number of October 15th will not decrease at some point in the future. The following represents the accurate number of students from the past three years acknowledging that the district will have its reportable number, reportable to the Department of Education, not the township, on or immediately after October 15th. And what we should expect to find is that in 2021, that number was 7,010 students, 2022, it was 6,991, and in 2023, that number will be 7,147, representing almost a 200-student increase." Then when it comes to the number of teachers, I also had asked about that, because Councilman McGrath pointed out that in 2023, there were 765 teachers, and in 2024, there's 804 teachers. It's a logical point. Enrollment is down, but teachers are up. And the superintendent wrote back, again, "It is unclear where the township is obtaining this information. Just like the township, the Board of Education's employee complement is fluid. However, using the number of certified staff members, not just teachers, who are members of the Parsippany-Troy Hills Education Association, the union that represents all certified members, as of September 1st, 2024, the district has 783 teaching staff members in the district." So that's a lot of content that basically suggests that the numbers do not look like how they are on, on what you found. I think that it would probably be important to have that meeting before we go ahead and authorize an audit, because we don't really know what is being audited.
So can I, can I answer his question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So when he checks in, it's the Parsippany-Troy Hills School District, Parsippany County of Moore's, New Jersey, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2023, submitted to the state of New Jersey, page 115, and it does call out October 15th as their point in time, similar to what he said, and it does say, "Teaching staff includes only full-time equivalents of certified staff." So this is the audited report that is being looked at. This is the document that I'm referencing. So when he asked me where I got it, I got it from him, and I got it from the school. So this is where I think the questions come in. Now, again, for me personally, I've gone through the financials, but I do have other questions when it comes to the financials that are reported versus what they say is in their budget. And this is a big challenge as well, because, and I want to admit, I'm not a CPA, so I don't understand everything. But when I look at the revenues on page 20, revenues are 205 million against a budget of 175. Expenditures on the following page, 201, is 207 million. Now this, I plotted against the graph here across year over year over year, and it's about 165 million in rover revenue, and I think it was about 158 million in over expenditure. Now granted, that comes from different funding sources, but this is stuff that I don't understand. I acknowledge it, and that's why we need an expert to explain it to us. I don't deny it, but that's the question is, is 205 million enough for the student population that's reported? And to his point, there was a document provided, and it is online on Facebook, one of the, one of the members of the Board of Ed did publish it, and I have it right here. This was from the 125 meeting, which does document the number of students based on 125. And this is, as you can see, Councilman, there's 213 pre-K students, 600, 6,000, excuse me, 962 elementary, middle, and high totaling 71, 75 at this point in time. Now this also comes into the question. Pre-K is a paid service, these students are the taxable students. I don't believe we're taking, or I don't believe we've been forced to by the governor yet to have pre-K as a business, but if we did, I believe there's 1.8 to 2.2 million in dollars that the governor has to help us. Now again, this is something I don't know, but this is a document that is online on Facebook, and anybody can go and pull this. So when he wonders where I get it, this is from the Board of Ed, Parsipony-Troy Hills School Superintendent's Board of Education Bulletin, January 25th, 2024, number 12. That's where the numbers come from. So this is why, again, I'll go back to, why we probably should have an expert come and look at this. Because if the superintendent and I can't agree on their own paperwork, we probably have a problem.
Any other discussion on this matter before we call for a vote?
Okay. You know what, I'm just going to say, again, what Mr. McGrath said, there's just, there's just too much inconsistencies with the numbers. I mean, these are numbers that were provided by the school to the state, but then the school is saying something different than their own numbers that they provided to the state. So something's getting lost in transition somewhere. So, you know, if somebody applies for a mortgage, they check it out. They don't just give, you know, if the school board's asking us for millions of dollars, we're not just going to turn around and just give them millions of dollars. Let us at least do our homework. And with these numbers being a little elusive, I think we need to get true answers. And like the mayor stated, it's not an audit, it's a review of it. If everything comes back fine, great. But if not, then at least now, everybody up here has a good comprehension of exactly what's going on. So.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to reiterate, we have R 2024-151, Contract to De Maria and De Maria LLP for Accounting, Auditing and Consulting Services. We had a motion by Mr. Neglia and a second by Mr. McGrath, and then we had some discussion. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and go into roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
I'm going to vote no.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kareefi?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three votes that are yes and two that are no. The motion passes. Moving along to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. One, authorizes payment of the September 13th, 2024 regular and miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. And two, payment of bills from bachelor list of 9-124 through 9-324, which is $1,190,049.17. Motion to approve the authorization for payment.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Kareefi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yep.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kareefi?
Yes.
Okay, a meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Can I, oh, can I make a motion to ban Wade from coming to another meeting?